So next we will move on to our third public hearing on interim zoning ordinance 2018-04-007 addressing the siting, establishment, and operation of temporary tent encampments and temporary building encampments in this city. And we'll hear from Rick Sepler.
Good evening, council members. This matter comes before you consistent with state law. As council will recall, council adopted earlier this year interim regulations regarding temporary encampments. And those regulations have been modified two times, and we currently have a interim regulation in place. Those regulations were established because council determined there was an emergency and that the absence of regulations would allow for unintended consequences to the community. We were assigned in the Planning and Community Development Department to amend our work plan and to bring forward a replacement, permanent ordinance through regular processes. I'm glad to say that we've made good progress on that, and the Planning Commission is scheduling a hearing on that. Nonetheless, the interim regulations are in place, and since they were adopted under an emergency basis, council needs consistent with state law to hold a public hearing within 60 days of adoption. This is that public hearing. Council's options are to do nothing, continue the emergency and the regulations, to amend the regulations based on comments and discussion, or to repeal the regulations this evening. Staff would recommend continuing the regulations, allowing for the permanent regulations to be brought forward through regular processes. We likely will be in front of you in August with permanent regulations for your consideration and notice public hearing for the public. If there are any questions, I'm sure City Attorney Al Mariner or myself can happily answer those.
Counsel, any questions at this point? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for our community. And this is a reminder that it is regarding temporary tent encampments and temporary building encampments in the city. And we'll go ahead with our names listed.
First three speakers are Brent Belsher, Russ Sepienza, and Jim Peterson.
My name is Brent Belsher, and I'm here to comment on emergency ordinance 2018-04-07 for temporary encampments. I own the commercial office building next door to the low barrier shelter on West Holly Street. Since the low barrier shelter opened, I've been overwhelmed with issues from the shelter including trash, needles, liquor bottles, human feces, urine, people always on the property, threats, and a complete lack of security in the area. I did a public record search that showed 952 emergency responses from fire and police departments between the time it opened in October 2016 to last month. 952 to one address. My tenants are mainly small businesses providing medical services, and they're stressed. They're worried about security, and they're losing customers as a result of what is happening right outside their doors. This is a huge impact to them. With the nuisance and the mayhem, I can't retain tenants, I can't attract tenants. To date, the shelters cost me over $100,000, mainly from lost rent, and that amount grows every month. Section 11B.1 of the ordinance states that the proposed use will not be substantially injurious to the property or improvements in the vicinity of the proposed encampments. This shelter is absolutely strangling the businesses of my tenants and therefore my business. My building is mostly empty now. How much financial injury must I incur before Section 11B.1 of this ordinance triggers a repeal? The Planning Department considered several locations for the low barrier shelter. One of those, for example, was 509 Gerard Street where the Watkin County Health Department offices are located. That's just right over here. That location was disqualified because potential impacts, potential impacts to nearby residents and a nearby school. And Mr. Sepler was in the middle of that one. The closest residence is 330 feet away across two city streets, and the closest school is over 900 feet away across five city streets. My business, or my building, is 50 feet down a public sidewalk, and the closest residence is right across the street. How can you conclude that the shelter is injurious to residences over 300 feet away from 509 Gerard Street but not to my property 50 feet away or to the residences right across the street? Reconcile that for me. Reconcile that for me. Council members, you put that encampment back on the lawn of City Hall because certainly, if it's not injurious to my property per this ordinance, then it's not injurious to City Hall. You deal with the nuisance, threats, and lack of security. Then you also withdraw thousands from your bank account and throw it in the wind, and you'll understand my frustration and anger because that's exactly what you're doing to me. My tenants and I have a security nightmare down there. A building I can't lease, an illegal use of a shelter next door.
Time.
And a city bureaucracy which has decided that it's okay to sacrifice my business and businesses of my tenants.
Time is up, sir.
You need to repeal this ordinance.
Time is up, sir.
My name is Russ Sepienza. I live on 1201 North Garden Street in Bellingham. On the one hand, I would like to ask a question of all of you. How many of you know people who are homeless? That's a significant amount of people in this town who have a very deep stake in this issue. It's more than just simply "the" homeless. I mean, a lot of the homeless people are more likely than not will become victims of crime. Now, I understand that there are some people who are upset, and they have every right to be upset about trash and needles and human feces. That's understandable. But to use that as an excuse to just throw out the homeless and send them somewhere else where there'll be someone else's problem is unjustifiable. Because any one of us, at any time, can be homeless, whether it's from job loss, mental illness, addiction, it makes no difference what it is. We're not looking to put encampments in every place because obviously, you know, some places are not going to be fit for them. But to just use the unfortunate situation of this gentleman to assume that anyone and everyone who is homeless is guaranteed to be a threat doesn't make any sense to me at all. Thank you.
No clapping, please. We need to respect everyone's opinion.
The next speaker is Jim Peterson.
My name's Jim Peterson. I'm speaking as President of Homes Now. I'd like to draw your attention to Section 4, Part B. I'd like some clarification. It talks about temporary building encampment means temporary facility in a building and other permanent structure with overnight sleeping can only be done by religious organizations. I thought we went through this. Homes Now does want to do rehabs on housing that's boarded up. I don't understand the temporary tent cities. Seems like you separated them. You got tent cities, tent encampments, and then you've got, I would put in B, tiny homes because they are permanent structures that can be moved. So I'd just like some clarification on that. And then Section 5, Paragraph C, the six-foot-high fence with side obscuring fencing. We have no problem with fencing. TC5 has 10-foot-high fences. We have a problem with side obscuring. It's a police issue? If they're driving by, they can't see in. They can't see if somebody's being killed in there or somebody's being mugged in there. The neighbors can't see what's going in there, so nobody knows what's going inside there. We had a talk with Sheriff Elfo, and he wrote county council because they're getting ready to pass warrants tonight to take the side obstructing fence away. We don't have a problem with the fence. We want the fence because that gives us a way to secure who comes, who goes. As this gentleman was talking, I agree with him. There's no structure down there. We're running totally different. We will have a fence, we'll have security there, and people will come and go, there will be trash cleanup. We'll have porta-pots and stuff. So that's the other thing. And then Section 7, ENF, temporary encampments may not include more than 130 individuals at a time. God, that's too many in my point. We only want to do 20 in a tent encampment. We want to do more than one tent encampment. Want to keep it 20, keep it small. Section F, onsite supervisor must provide, be provided at the temporary building encampment at all times. Does that mean paid staff? Or can we do it like TC5 does and it's run by the homeless that live there? We wouldn't be happy if it was run by the homeless that live there, not so much paid staff. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Abe Jacobson, Kevin Moore, and Rebecca Malloy.
Abe Jacobson, boy, that was very knowledgeable comments by Mr. Peterson. I wanted to know, maybe council could clarify this or staff could clarify it. If we go to regularized tent encampments, will we also start cleaning up some of the irregular ones which don't have the benefit of management, security, sanitation that Mr. Peterson was urging? Or are we just going to still give people the option of camping rough anywhere? So in other words, is this going to move us forward toward a more regular and secure and safe way for the homeless to survive? Or are we going to continue to be two-track? And that's honestly a question. I don't know the answer. I know what I want the answer to be, but I don't know what the answer is.
For those of you I have not met, my name is Kevin Moore. I'm the CEO of Northwest Recycling located down on Holly Street. I just want to share a few thoughts. We've been in the Old Town area operating Northwest Recycling since the 80s, and the Parbury family have been in the neighborhood since 1923. It's easy for us to acknowledge, you know, that this is a huge problem for the city, and we'd also like to acknowledge that the Lighthouse Mission has been a good neighbor to us in the past, and we are very supportive of their core programs. But we believe the low barrier shelter is a different animal. We believe it serves a segment of the homeless population that is particularly challenging and may require a completely different approach. Rather than asking or saying whether we do or do not support the low barrier shelter, we would like to change the narrative and talk more about what is the highest best use of Old Town itself, which we control a large part of that property through our recycling center. The 2016 comprehensive plan talks about the 10 overarching goals, that being to ensure the quality of life in our community. Goal number two is to foster vibrant urban villages. So it's really a little bit about choices and the choices we need to make. I'm going to skip through some of this just to get to the practical. Here's what I, here's what we would like you to consider. Emergency ordinance 04-007 was adopted in April, expires in one year. The stated purpose is to develop a work plan to figure out the long-term solution. A year ago in June, the council passed Resolution 2017-27, which exempted the low barrier shelter from compliance with building code requirements until May of '22. Obviously, we don't have any synchronization here. So we would ask you to go back and look at that resolution and amend it to expire simultaneously in one year from the date of the current emergency ordinance we're looking at. I'd also like to have you look at limiting the number of individuals that may be in the encampment to 80, which is the same number that the mission, the Lighthouse Mission actually asked for in their application. The ordinance should specify a minimum code of conduct. It says there will be one, and the applicant gets to decide what that is. We believe that you have the ability and the responsibility to actually suggest what that would say. We also believe that the sponsor should obtain verifiable identification from people that enter the shelter. What's interesting to me is it does contain that language for the tent encampments but not for the building encampments. That just seems a little odd. Thank you. There's a lot more. I'd love to talk to you offline.
I'm Rebecca Malloy. I'm still of the feeling that we need tiny homes placement, a tiny homes placement program citywide. For instance, I have a Facebook friend. She's 80 years old. She lives in the Birchwood community in an apartment building for 12 years. They recently, the landlord recently said that they're remodeling, and her rent is going up $400. She cannot afford it. She is avidly looking for housing, an apartment in Bellingham between $600 and $800 a month, and she cannot find it. What she is doing today is she has good credit and she's buying a van. That woman could live in a tiny home on the back of a single residential neighborhood. She could have, live in a lovely little tiny home behind a Victorian home. She could have some earth. She could grow some plants. So I think we need a tiny homes placement program citywide because this is going to grow. Our own grandparents are going to be displaced. They cannot afford to stay here. Thank you.
The last three speakers are Max Lewis, Kip Waryerski, and Mark Gale.
Good evening. I'm Max Lewis. I live about 500 feet up the street on West Holly from the low barrier shelter. And I want to say that I do see the need for a low barrier shelter. And when the low barrier shelter first came to our neighborhood, I had high hopes that it would work out, and I've been really quite disappointed about that. We now have a reapplication under consideration, and the emergency ordinance that you have passed addresses some of the criteria for reviewing that application. I think that with the particular population that we're talking about, they require intensive supervision and a lot of resources, and I'm concerned that those resources are not available either through Lighthouse Mission or through the city at this point. I think council might share some of our concerns in that I note that the review process in Section 11B.4 notes that significant impacts should be reduced to being temporary and at an acceptable level. That's a pretty subjective kind of criteria, and I would like to know if I could ask the council about what their intention is and what their definition of acceptable level is. For example, does the council consider the conditions in and around the immediate area of the low barrier shelter to be acceptable at this point? Some of the problems that we've had in the extended neighborhood, 500 feet down the street, on up the street, I think there'll be some other people a little bit farther away that are talking. Has the council been monitoring the conditions in the immediate area and in the extended area, and do you consider them to be acceptable at this time?
So we don't respond to questions. This is a public hearing, so we appreciate your questions being directed our way.
That's why I asked if I could ask the questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kip Waryerski. I have a law firm at 1402 F Street, right next to the mission. I did my due diligence, and we moved there 10 years ago. I knew the mission would be a good neighbor, and they always were a good neighbor. We supported them. I do disability work. I represent people who live at the mission. I represent people who live behind dumpsters. I know what this population is, and I know how challenging it is. The mission was a good neighbor until recently. I am very sad to say here today that they're not a good neighbor anymore, but they were a good neighbor. Everything changed when the drop-in center went in. The entire neighborhood changed. Last summer, I couldn't believe how many tents there were around the property, how many people were on our properties, how many people were going to other properties, beer bottles, urinating, defecating, things that I'd never seen before. And it has had a huge impact. In fact, today, we're installing security cameras for $10,000 around the property. Never thought I would ever have to do something like that. Bellingham has a plan for Old Town. I've looked it up. It was in 2008. The plan specifies wants to allow a mix of residential and commercial uses in Old Town to make the district a desirable place to live, work, and play. Take your family down there at some time during the day, early morning, late at night. Try to walk down that sidewalk. I dare people to try to walk down that sidewalk at different hours of the day. Another big portion is that it shouldn't be injurious to its neighbors. We heard Mr. Belsher speak. Frankly, I took offense at another speaker who basically accused him of hating homeless people. None of us hate homeless people. They need to be cared for. And just because we don't support this particular project doesn't mean that we don't support homeless people. This is much more detrimental to the area than people realize, but I'll tell you, one of the biggest impacts is going to be on Old Town redevelopment. This is an opportunity of a lifetime. We have a huge, not me, but we have a huge portion of downtown Old Town that can be redeveloped. Urban Village, which is what we want, low-income housing, regular housing, restaurants, businesses, other things that will contribute to the tax base. I don't blame Parburys for not wanting to leave if this is going to go right in that center and drive people away. They can't redevelop it that way. It just simply won't happen. I've always supported the Lighthouse Mission. I've always told people who ask, "What's it like being next door?" I say, "It's great. They're great neighbors." Now, I've asked them, "Hey, can you do something about all these problems we're having? Can you walk the neighborhood? Can you help clean up?" They say they don't have the resources. But they have the resources to go out and look for million-dollar properties and other things to buy up for hoping to do a 200-bed shelter. So I think they have a good reputation. I think the Lighthouse Mission reputation is going downhill, and it could be sullied by this. I would ask that this problem be fixed in a different way.
Time is up. We have to move on to other speakers.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Gale. I live at Broadway and Holly, just up the street from the mission. We've met on the 15th with the mayor's office and Patrol Chief Lieutenant Chad Cristelli. Appreciate it. Along with the planner, Mr. Rick Sepler. I met with the head of the mission to ask questions about what's been going on. I realize, just like other speakers, homeless is a huge issue. A Lighthouse Mission, I wrote here, has been a good neighbor, in our opinion. That is, until October 2016, when the Day Center became a low barrier shelter. We appreciate the work of the police, the Planning Department, the city, and the Lighthouse, and what many community groups are doing. People in our condo there work at St. Paul's Kitchen Episcopal Church. I'm a member of Congregational Faith Community, and we're helping build and we're volunteering there the ground floor, or we will be, for the homeless young adults. Some of us are on United Board, or Way Board. Some of us support the Leonard Street Covenant Church, Cold Weather Shelter, Family Promise, Interfaith. We support all of that, and yet things have changed dramatically. Why are we opposed to a four-year extension? Because there's a glaring disparity between what the mission has agreed and promised to do in operating the low barrier shelter and what in reality is happening at and in front of the shelter and surrounding neighborhood. I could give you a big, long list, but you've heard a number of things. It says onsite supervision must be provided, but they've asked us to call. But when we called them, like when a business there had a naked man, except for a T-shirt that obviously had mental issues come in, when we called them, they said, "Call the police." Many of our residents here don't like calling the police when there's issues because we know there's other emergencies that you're dealing with that are really important, and so they don't call. We made suggestions in positive ways. We hope maybe that will be brought to you. We wanted you to turn it down or shorten the extension of the low barrier shelter until the mission meets some of these things that they've agreed to. I think they want to. I think they've tried to. It has not succeeded, we can tell you. We suggested more police presence with possibly bike officers. The problem is, there's not enough resources for that to happen. We requested a mechanism for ongoing input, but I told you what happened when we called, we are told to call the police. We suggested the mission or any efforts with the low barrier shelter include addiction and mental health services. They have some for their own program, but not for this large population.
Time is up. Thank you.
And we can't approve it if we don't do this.
We need to move on to other speakers, please.
Thank you.
Okay, I will allow one more speaker. That's it.
My name's Amy Glasser. I live in Bellingham, and I represent Homes Now, but I think I might represent absolutely everybody who talked here. Everybody. The people who are unhappy with what's going on in front of the mission. Homes Now, same exact place. We have always said that when you put a couple hundred people in a shelter, the way the city would like to do, you are bound to get at least, if you go by a 15% rule, which is like a really low statistic, 15% of the people are going to have major, major issues. That's 35. You put 35 people, just even that amount, in one building with major, major issues, and that's why you have 900 and something calls to the police and the fire department within a less than two-year span. As a mental health professional, the people at the mission are not trained well enough to deal with those types of people with major mental illness and major issues with substance abuse and mental illness. They are, they just don't have the right training. The mission's mission is, as it says on the website, "God," which makes sense. They're the mission, for God's sakes. That's what they should be doing. But they've also said they are not housing first. They say that. We are a city of housing-first programs. You're putting your eggs all in a basket that doesn't even believe in what you believe in. I am hoping that you can realize that Homes Now, and I'm going to guess after we do one tiny homes pilot project, there's going to be agencies and groups that are going to want to do it similar but a little different depending on the population they serve all over. Sat Paul Soodoo said in the county council meeting that we should have parts of parks in the county that are dedicated to little tiny home projects. Not 200 people, but 10 to 15 to 20 people, just like Jim was saying. Small, where they're manageable, with social services that will do outreach to them, like our projects say. All of them have service buildings for the mental health programs to come to, and that's a manageable caseload versus 200, no matter where you go. You put a bunch of people with mental health problems together, and you're going to escalate everybody's issue tenfold. Like you put people to sleep in the mission sitting six inches away from each other on a mat and expect people with PTSD, or lice, or twitches, or Tourette's to all live in that building and sleep there without good sleep? You're just exacerbating mental health issues. Okay, so enough of the mental health. Bottom line is, we have agencies like Homes Now, Not Later, that are willing to work with you. We have at least 40-plus parks in the city of Bellingham. Give a little piece of it. Come on, you can spare a square. Cornwall Park was given, thank you for getting that. I saw you, I saw you, Gene. You can spare that square. Cornwall Park was given to the people for a tent camp when people first arrived here. Do it again. They're already there, but sanction it with the proper services, and we will all service them so that you don't have to.
Time. Okay, that wraps up this public hearing. I'll turn it back over to the council. Seeing none? Rick Sepler, please.
If I might, just to clarify a few things, there seems to be some general confusion. This is not a public hearing this evening on the mission's low barrier shelter. This is on the ordinance that regulates that use. I should note that if you essentially did not have these regulations, by state law, a religious organization can do a building encampment. So it could be established. These regulations are interim. They're in place solely to give us a placeholder for review. That review has yet to occur. Folks are addressing concerns on a permit that has not been issued yet and is still under consideration. And that process does not come before council. That process is administrative with an appeal to the hearing examiner. Council's role, clearly, is to set the rules to allow us to evaluate applications. In this case, staff feels fairly strongly that we need to have better guidance in terms of public of public health, safety, and welfare to evaluate applications rather than to accept them on their face as submitted. A number of the concerns that have been raised have weight and need to be fairly considered in the review process. We have not reached a conclusion on that. We've been working diligently to address it. I appreciate the comments that were noted in terms of the code of conduct, notification, fences, all of those issues. If the speakers wish to look at the planning commission's work sessions, every one of those issues have been addressed, and modifications are being crafted for your review and for the public's review at a forthcoming public hearing. However, the process is the planning commission hears public comment, holds its own hearing, and then makes a recommendation that's going to come forward to the city council, and you'll have a hearing just like that to make permanent rules. Nothing that I have heard would change the standards we have at this point. However, it is likely those standards, after dutiful work, public comment, and consideration of both the planning commission and the city council, will change. You put them in place to get a placeholder. We do have an application that is submitted by that, and I've described the separate process that would be used for it. Finally, I just want to clarify that any use that would be established consistent with these ordinances or the interim ordinance that's adopted is a temporary use. It is not permanent. These are not intended to be long-term solutions, and especially at the same location. And they are intended to extinguish the use and to provide alternative locations, similar to what's done in other communities. However, that will come clear as we bring forward the materials. And as I noted in the brief presentation at the beginning, the planning commission is scheduling its public hearing on the draft regulations. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, any further discussion? I will take Councilmember Vargas and Councilmember Hamel.
Rick, a question about Section 4b managed by a religious organization. Is that because it was the churches that came forward with properties? Is that, could you clarify why the religious stipulation?
Yeah, we put that in there, as Rick did. Alan Mariner, Deputy City Attorney, we put that in there because, under RCW 3521915, religious organizations have an absolute right to operate temporary building or tent encampments on property that they own or manage, subject only to reasonable rules to protect public health and safety. So, that's why we didn't want to expand the temporary rule broader than what state law was.
Counselmember Hamel?
Thank you. What is the timeline for planning staff and the planning committees, their public hearing regarding this matter?
The planning commission, we're looking to finalize the ordinance. We have clear direction, we'll schedule the public hearing. It's a 30-day notice, as you know. We hope to have the public hearing in July. It is likely we'd be before you at the end of August or early September for adoption of permit regulations or consideration of those permit regulations.
Counselor Lilquist, please.
Well, first, I appreciate Mr. Sepler trying to clarify some things. Our job up here, we're not deciding what the city would like to do to address the homeless problem. We're not telling people what we would like to do or our preferred solution. We're just setting the limits that if someone else wants to establish a camp, here's rules that they would need to obey. This is not for or against any particular establishment. You could build tiny homes under this or not under this. This doesn't require you to build in a certain way. It just says, "If you do decide to build, here's how, here are the rules you need to follow." As you said, Mr. Sepler, it's not about any particular development. In general, I think the rules are pretty good. I look forward to the final version coming forward. At this moment, the one that really kind of bugged me, the first time this came forward, and kind of bugs me now, is the fencing issue. I can't decide if it's too much or too little. It seems kind of unfriendly to wall people in, and as was pointed out, it can create safety problems, potentially. But then again, it also creates privacy, both for the neighbors and for the residents. I'm not sure what to do about fences. I can't recommend right now what I think should happen, but I think that needs to be revisited, maybe more flexibility or functional goals, rather than specifying six feet of height is required.
Mr. Sepler, please.
If I might respond, we agree. In the ordinance, it does allow for those standards to be modified or waived based on circumstances. The purpose of the fencing is generally to control access so that onsite residents can have a greater feeling of security. In the planning commission's direction to prepare the ordinance for consideration by the public, they provided significant modifications in terms of the purpose of the fencing to clarify what it's there for. It's not to wall folks in, to keep people from seeing them, it's, and it's not required in all circumstances where topographic or natural features would replace the need for a fence. However, based on the Low Income Housing Institute, LEHI, who runs a number of tent encampments in Seattle, they believe controlled access is very key for the safety of the residents. And that's why the fencing is required. If there's an alternative, certainly could be considered, and there's the ability to depart from that even in this draft, even in this interim control you have adopted.
Counsel, anything further? Counselmember Barker, and then Boardman?
Yeah, it is difficult because these all blend together, but I think the most important thing to realize is, had we done nothing, there would be no regulations to move forward with, and this has started a process. So, I do understand for the people that it's hard to parse out. I'm prepared to support this, knowing that we have a path forward. I do, however, am hearing from tonight, and I'll bring it up, in new and old business, but we clearly need a plan to deal with what's currently happening down there and to understand from an administration what we're doing, the monies that have gone forward. I don't want to take it off-topic now, but maybe we can talk about that in new and old.
Go ahead, Mayor Haley.
I'll address that in my mayor's report, then.
Great. Counselmember Boardman?
Yeah. So, my understanding is if we take no action, this stays in place until the one that's being drafted, the permanent one, comes up for the hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, again, counsel, anything further? Okay, I will close this public hearing, and we will move on to the next. Mayor Kelly had some comments.
Yes, thank you, President, thank you, President Murphy. The planning commission has come, I mean, the planning department's come forward with the planning commission recommendations, and I think that's appropriate for them to do that. I do not agree with the recommendations, so I would like to make a comment just before you deliberate about this. And for me, the issue is the Portland model or the Seattle model. And the planning commission did the Seattle model, which allows for more commercialization of properties. The Portland model says you may have a rental in your house where you're living, to give another experience to people, and I agree with that. Our housing is so short in the city of Bellingham that personally, I would like to basically recommend or state my public support for the Portland model, and that way, we are not even considering to reduce rental properties or places where people could buy for commercial activities like Airbnbs in a residential neighborhood. And I felt like I've always support my planning staff, and they're bringing forward the recommendation, but I wanted to just express my difference of opinion with what the planning commission did. I believe in Airbnb. I believe it's a great opportunity, both for a different experience in our community. I know a lot of people that go other places and use them, but also to help some of our residents, as was stated earlier, stay in their homes by generating a little bit more income. And I think that in resident, in your resident, one unit in your resident, in your residence is not as potentially impactful as separate buildings or two or managing properties. So, that's all. I just wanted to have a chance to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kelly. I'm guessing we're going to hear a myriad of opinions, and generally, when that happens, we refer such issues to a committee for further discussion. I will now take counsel comment. Counselmember Boardman, please.
Yeah, I was curious on the goals. It lists two goals here, but in every comp plan that I've seen since I've been on the council and every neighborhood plan, one of the key elements in it on residential is to preserve the quality of the individual neighborhoods. That's not mentioned, but yet, we cite the economic, citing business interest in these neighborhoods over preserving the quality of the neighborhoods where people are living. Why, why was that omitted as a goal? That should always be a key goal with that, and this is stressing the economic benefits of people over the quality of living in your own neighborhood. I'm puzzled.
Well, I think, and I wouldn't presume to speak for the planning commission in their deliberations, but they, I know expressly tried to balance those, the impacts to neighbors and the size and number with the ability to adapt for a changing world, where folks like the experience of being in neighborhoods. Now, we might disagree with their recommendation, but their intent was to try to find that balance. And you might say, no, it's, you couldn't overcome those impacts by having this used there. And that's fair.
But it wasn't one of the goals you gave them. You gave, I took these two goals to be the directions of planning.
We had more goals that we presented in our first presentation. We'd be happy to provide it to you. We talked about the need for predictability for the neighbors, impacts on the neighbors that we wanted to prevent every day from being Saturday night because folks have to get up and go to work. Some of that led in planning commission discussion to good neighbor policy, which deals with our outside hours, limitation on guests, and a significant concern about outside noise, parking impacts, garbage, those kind of things. Again, you might disagree with the formula, with their recipe here, but I do know that their intent was trying to find some balance for those.
Okay, Counselmember Lilquist.
Yeah, I guess I kind of want to simplify this. I'm not hearing a lot of upset with the spare room idea, and I think people are very comfortable with the idea in commercial areas and such, you know, downtown, that, again, the concern's not there. The concern is kind of what I'm going to call the middle group in residential areas that aren't spare rooms. You say that, you know, you have this map with the dots on it, and you say that there are 318 unique rental units, but general locations, I guess we don't know the size of that middle group that I'm talking about. If we took out the spare rooms, if we took out the commercial areas, looking at the red dots, I'm going to guess maybe half of them would be the middle group that I think gets most of the attention. Do we know how big that proportion is out of 318?
Well, just in general, these are provided to us by a consultant who, along, there are several firms that do this, who hope in the future to get our business. And they provided their methodology, and they've shown us what they can do. These are generalized locations. They're not truth. There's a field truthing that comes up to verify their location. I should note that during public hearing previously, before the planning commission, a number of people asserted that they go on Airbnb, and there are 600 listings. However, if you mine down a bit, you find out that things that are on Chukonut or out in the county are listed under Bellingham. It's the actual location that's more difficult to find. We feel fairly confident that we've got a pretty good breakdown, roughly right. We could certainly engage them, which would be a bit premature because you'd want to negotiate a contract when we knew the number and scope and scale to give us the exact number, but we think at this point, we're roughly right.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing with respect for the fact that people have been waiting an hour and a half to provide testimony on this, and we will turn it back over to the council at the end of the public hearing.
These are questions that are pertinent for people to comment on because we need explanation ourselves on issues here, Madam President.
And I also believe we will bring this back for discussion, but please make your question quick.
Okay. When we did the hearings on the DADUs, and we brought up about, and people kept bringing up about, they're going to be used for this. And now, in this ordinance, and we're saying, don't worry, it's illegal to do that, to rent out DADUs for short-term rentals. But in this ordinance, it looks like we're saying they can use those, and could you, well, you keep using accessory dwelling units. What's that relating to if that's not?
Yeah.
So, could you explain it? Because I don't understand that.
Yeah, it's expressed, expressly indicated, and we can give you the site. We'd have to look it up, but it's, detached accessory dwelling units are not allowed in residential single zones. Now, if you are in a commercial zone, or if you're a multifamily zone and you have a detached unit, you potentially could use it. But remember, we allow hotels and motels in those zones, too. There's an expectation that could occur. But single-family detached housing that has a detached ADU could not use that ADU. And I will take a moment just to add on enforcement, not to belabor this point. These concerns are highly accurate. When the Super Bowl was held in, I believe it was Minnesota, they were hired, they were able to locate all of the ones that were operating without benefit of permit, and they were able to shut them down very quickly. If folks can't use the internet, they can't use their business. They're reduced to using 4x6 cards in the local store. So, in a sense, this is a very effective means of regulating it. We would be able to regulate those uses and accessory uses specifically, should this proceed as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing, please.
The first three speakers are Rebecca Malloy, Erin Krutz, and Chris Robinson.
I'm Rebecca Malloy, and I'll read my statement. I'm a primary residential homeowner living 40 years within a single-family neighborhood. I am a true bi-local, b-local sort of gal. Two years ago, I began short-term renting my upstairs bedrooms through Airbnb to one individual group at a time. I see that short-term rental rules versus long-term rental rules are not equitable for single-family neighborhoods. I request that you reevaluate the short-term rental type III CUP guidelines in regard to homeowners living within their primary residence. The proposed CUP cost is expensive, and the process is quite rigorous compared to lesser rules required for long-term rental landlords. I am concerned how wealthy absentee homeowners, small companies, many of out-of-town and state, and home rental agencies can buy up multiple single-family residential homes in our community and not have an $850 conditional use permit fee. They are not required to help facilitate a hearing process to conduct their 365-day businesses. They do not monitor renters' neighborhood activity on a daily basis. Many leave the grounds maintenance to the renters and leasers. Their rental problems do not get resolved for months on end, and there's little mechanism for authorities to help evict slacking renters. Importantly, they can buy up our housing stock, not maintaining the property, and sell in the future for an equity increase or leave the property empty to receive the benefit of a tax write-off. And regarding economic opportunity, it is my understanding that half of Bellingham residents are renters. There are many landlords and companies controlling the integrity of our single-family neighborhoods. When rents are paid to out-of-town companies and landlords, that money leaves our community immediately. Locally-owned, short-term rentals are the best of our city's bi-local, b-local, successful campaign, where money spent locally stays in our community, benefiting it for a long time. Short-term rental spaces are few. Maybe one-half of 1% of our housing stock has a negligible impact on local year-round housing needs. You know, 300 rentals, B&amp;B in this city, it's one-half of 1% of our housing stock. So, it's not a problem of taking housing away from our, the folks. Anyway, short-term renters spend little time at the rental unit as they are sightseeing, spending money locally, enjoying events in our environment. They, short-term renters are carefully vetted through Airbnb, and my experience is they are respectful and appreciative of well-maintained historic homes and neighborhoods. They embrace and love our community and wish to visit again. Living in my primary residence for 40 years and caring for my neighborhood's peace, beauty, and safety is of most importance. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erin. I live in the Puget neighborhood. I've been an Airbnb host for just over two years. My husband and I are both public servants, and we consider ourselves making a modest income. Airbnb makes it affordable to live in this increasingly expensive city. We rely on our Airbnb income. Our rental is a basement, a daylit basement with a one-bedroom, one-bath, and a living-room area. We would fall under the type 1 permit. We provide parking in our driveway and inside our garage. We provide parking in our driveway and inside our garage. We do not have street parking, so it's not an issue for us to offer that. We are clear with our neighbors. They support our rental. They help us. They understand when people are coming in and out. It's very much an open agreement that we have within our neighborhood. We rent most of the year, and we rent to parents, people here on conferences, students, the elderly, travelers on a budget, temporary professors at Western Washington, and people just in between housing, waiting for their houses to close that need a week here or there. We host all ages, and it's important for us to charge a little amount. We want travelers to be able to come here, spend money in the community, because that's how we like to travel, and we don't want it to be prohibitive for people to come and visit Bellingham. We get to choose when and who we rent our neighbor, our house to, and Airbnb vets all of our guests and protects them, and it protects us as renters. We oppose the STR proposal. We think it's way too restrictive. We would lose approximately 60% of the income we make from it. It limits the rental availability throughout the year. For those of us that fall into this classification, we would only rent when we can make the most income. That loses all these potential folks coming to our city, you know, parents visiting their kids. They'd lose that opportunity, and it's going to be more expensive for them. It makes no beneficial sense to anyone to limit those of us sharing our homes to 90 days. We also question the enforcement of the 90-day limit. If people are monitoring our calendars, we also close our place when we have family and friends visiting. Is that going to be looking at us as we're taking income during those periods of time? And how much is the city paying for the service to monitor us and watch our sites? We understand that we have a housing crisis, but for families renting a bedroom or a guest space, we have no impact to this problem. We are simply surviving to stay here as well. This proposal ignores the benefits Airbnb brings to Bellingham. We provide a niche market, personalized for guests. We bring in tax revenue, tourist income, and allows us to afford living here. Thank you.
My name's Chris Robinson. I live in the 1100 block of Grant Street, and I just wanted to speak today and thank the Planning Commission for the work that they've done, and I'm generally in support of it. I think they did a great job of recognizing the balance between the need for rental units in town and also the, the economic advantage that it can bring to just regular sort of Joe, middle-class people living in Bellingham. I am currently working on two conditional use permits. I have one at my house with my wife, who like to use our back room, and we bought a house across the street. So I might be the person that you're all worried about, taking all these properties out of the neighborhood and turning them into rentals. I can tell you that we have, we took a, a house that was pretty beat up as a college rental. We're in the 1100 block of Grant Street, and we, it was an absentee landlord living in Colorado. The place was pretty beat up, and we fixed it up pretty nice. We believe we've improved the neighborhood an awful lot. We believe we've reduced the amount of noise in our neighborhood. We believe we've increased the amount of parking available in the neighborhood, and we believe that we have taken an absentee landlord out of the neighborhood. This is directly across the street from us. I didn't bring my petition, but I had 100% of the residents living on the 1100 block of Grant Street agree that we are doing a good job and that they approve of what we're doing. So I guess, just to reiterate, I want to thank you for sort of recognizing that there is a, a need for this, that there's, there's people that are trying to make ends meet. In my case, I lost my job, and so I've sort of created a job for myself. I kind of have five part-time jobs. I mow lawns, and I paint, and I'm doing a lot of laundry. I think I'm making an honest living. I don't think I'm a, the, the commercial landlord guy who's going to destroy the neighborhood. I think I'm a good neighbor, and I think my neighbors would, would agree. I think they would, I think, and I've said this a few times, I can think of several other houses in my neighborhood that if they turned into a short-term rental, it might even improve things a bit. So this idea that, never mind. Oh, I just also wanted to say, again, I appreciate you recognizing that there's a need for housing in Bellingham. I think 318 houses listed as whole houses is minuscule. I also think if you look at Airbnb, you'll see that 318 is pretty exaggerated. We're talking about whole houses listed on Airbnb at least as anything, you don't share anything. So we're talking about basement dwellings. We're talking about back rooms. We're talking about, I've seen boats. I've seen tents. So 318, I think, is pretty exaggerated. I think that we're not talking about a massive amount of, of properties being taken off of the, of the housing role for rentals. And then finally, just looking at the people that I know who are trying to do this, I don't think we're talking about a bunch of, ooh, okay. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Scott Jones, Leslie Shankman, and Abe Jacobson.
Hello, my name is Scott Jones, and I'm a Bellingham resident. I'm here tonight to ask you to place a moratorium on short-term vacation rentals. Just last, last month, you, the city council legalized detached accessory dwelling units due to the affordable housing crisis we face. It was argued that every home possible was required for those in need. Now, we are here discussing the possibility of allowing an entire home to be rented for a month, a week, or even just a weekend. That home could have been used to house a local family. That apartment could have been used to house a struggling couple. Now it would be used for a party or a family passing through who just last month couldn't have pointed to Bellingham on a map. In 2015, Duluth, Minnesota placed a moratorium on short-term rentals until they could develop a program that would work for all residents. Two years later, they had a greatly scaled-back program that works for the residents and its visitors. Bellingham residents do not experience your actions separately. They feel each ordinance intertwined for years to come. DADUs, Airbnbs, urban villages, parks, wages, everything combined for years to come. This is especially true if they are a household who cannot find housing and who is underemployed. When done badly, the effects are compounded. The effects will continue in zoning and even with businesses who will not be able to trust our city to create a stable live-work environment for their employees. Increased housing stock one month and decreased housing stock another? That destabilization of a city is exactly what a city council is to guard against, not create. Please place this ordinance on hold, focus on what matters to our community, our residents, and pick it back up when it does not hurt Bellingham and enforcement is possible. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Shankman, and some of what I wanted to say has been said, but I'm up here to talk about Airbnbs, but I also, and I appreciate that, that the short-term housing questions are being looked at because it's very, very necessary. I appreciate and support a lot of what's been said tonight, especially about having tiny house or campment areas. But that aside, when we get to the Airbnb question, I feel that the, the intent is good, but the process needs to go on, and you brought up some good questions. First of all, the whole house is completely a misnomer. These are the daylight basements. They're in our houses, and the Airbnb nomenclature is if we have a private entrance, if it's a private separate space, it's called a whole house. So I think you're going to find very few whole houses. Realistically, we can't, we wouldn't be renting out these two bedrooms in our daylight base, not two bedrooms, but two rooms and a bathroom. There's no kitchen down there. We wouldn't be renting this out to people. It's not taking away from rental housing. Now, I'm also a private landlord with my husband, and we own six units. They are severely under-rented as far as market prices because we know our tenants, and they are all financially stressed. And if we raise their rents, every single one of them would be on the streets. So we're not going to do that because I, we just can't, and we don't want to. So there's a little bit of subsidization going on as water bills go up and taxes go up and such. So Airbnb actually comes in quite handy for that, which I can appreciate, you know, earning the income for that and moving the pot over a little bit. I also find it, I, I feel that you asked many people in your process about Airbnbs, but they're, they're more the business community of the established business community. I didn't hear that the hosts were spoken to, and I think a lot of the practical questions you have could have been answered with speaking to the hosts, and I think maybe that should be put on the forward planning. The 90-day thing is really hard to figure, to, to regulate. It's going to cost money to do that. I don't know how you're going to regulate it. It's very hard for an Airbnb host to restrict yourself to 90 days because we get rentals out. That money for regulation could be used for some kind of housing fund. I think that this just needs to be reconsidered, and especially with the units that are within people's houses. As the mayor said, this is a real experience of our city. We're sharing our values. We're sharing, we're sharing our experiences. People like to come rent at our house because there's tree, trailheads out the door. I also say it's in the Lake Wacon watershed, and it's not fair. We should be regulating boats, not Airbnbs there.
Abe Jacobson, I live in Bellingham. I'm surprised we're even having this discussion. We've all stipulated that we have a severe housing crisis. We'll all stipulate that there's a good supply of hotel space now that Northwest Avenue and the airport area and the late, what used to be the Best Western on Lakeway next to Freddie's, they're all huge and they're all partially filled. They're not full. So we don't have a shortage of hotel space. And thirdly, people who would make money to support their household by being hosts of VRBOs can also make it by having a student for 12 months and taking that student out of this tight market. So there isn't any need whatsoever for having VRBOs in this town. The reasoning is airy-fairy, but it doesn't pass muster. Do we have some kind of need to have wealthy tourists from out of state sipping their single malt Scotch whiskey? Is that somehow better than housing a student or housing a working family? These spaces can be used for either, and that's a choice that you make. This is sheer madness.
The next three speakers are Dick Conneboy, Michael Schiavario, and Hillary Cole.
Good evening, Dick Conneboy. I live in South 46th Street here in Bellingham, and Abe just took away all the wind from my sails. I was going to say exactly the same thing, so I'll be extremely brief. Yes, the cognitive dissonance that arises from this ordinance, after all we went through on the ADU ordinance, the importance of having more housing, and then only to give it away to visitors. I think we need to pay attention to those people who might be coming in here from, to work in Bellingham, from, commuting from Demming, that we ought to have something here in town for them to live in, and something affordable. Instead, we don't even know who the people are who have these vacation rentals. We've got 300. I don't know if that represents 300 individual property owners or what, but the fact is, if we say that some people use these to boost their income so that they can afford to live in their house, we don't know that. It might be 15 people in all, of all those 300. It may be five. So what we need first is an, an accurate inventory and find out who these property owners are and what the reason is that they're renting these places out. Otherwise, we're just guessing. So I'm not going to repeat what Abe said or what Scott said. I think they're right on the money. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Michael Schiavario. I think the ordinance goes generally in the right direction, but I am here to advocate tightening up the ordinance a bit. I think a guiding principle for finally crafting this ordinance needs to be maximizing the availability of long-term housing in Bellingham. As you well know, and the county council has recognized, we are in a housing emergency. I would define a housing emergency as, in part, a situation in which more than 5% of renters in Bellingham are paying rent that is more than 30% of their monthly income. The ordinance needs to do a few things. Require permits and licensure for short-term rentals of non-owner-occupied housing stock to include apartments, detached, single-family dwellings, including DADUs, and attached ADUs. Don't leave rental units empty with the 90-day rule. Only issue permits and licenses during the housing emergency to those already operating short-term rentals, a grandfather clause, and only issue licenses for one short-term rental per owner. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Hi, my name is Hillary Cole, and I live in Bellingham. Okay, first, I just want, a little bit off-topic, I just want to give a shout-out to that great shower truck outside. It's fantastic. Okay, anyway, okay. I'd like to place a moratorium on the Airbnb ordinance. Everyone knows Airbnb is driving up, driving up the long-term rental rates, making life very difficult for tenants, the very people the city and the planning department say they want to serve. Why are we, why are we even considering Airbnbs when there is not enough housing for existing citizens? Not only this, if my neighbors start renting out their rooms, it's not only just noise and traffic that increases, it's other demands on local infrastructure, not to mention a very transient population that has no loyalty to the community. Also, this past early spring, I walked from Cornwall Park to Trader Joe's in some back alleyways in the mostly sunny land neighborhood, and I must have counted at least four suspected DADUs and one confirmed Airbnb. A guy told me down, he was putting out the garbage, and he told me, oh yeah, that's been going on for a long time. So these, this is, and this was before the DADU vote. So these rental units were most likely illegal, or they weren't specified, and it was another thing people are talking about. My question is this: if the city can't regulate these, excuse me, these units, then what makes it confident it can do so in the future? Okay, thank you.
The next three are Meghan Sokol, Carrie Bean, and Judith Green. Meghan Sokol?
No problem.
Carrie Bean is the next speaker.
My name is Carrie, and I'm a Bellingham resident, and I would like to express support for regulated short-term rentals. STRs are a terrific way to meet the many needs of our wonderful city. I believe that they can provide unique and local housing for travelers, incentivizing opportunity for much-needed income for Bellingham and residents, and expand the benefits of diversity to our many neighborhoods. While working for a nonprofit school serving at-risk youth, I struggled to make ends meet. The STR market allowed me to continue work with nonprofits and own a home. I have also taught and lived overseas. Whether I was staying in a Casa Particulare in Cuba or in a Pinchione in Greece, I know that the opportunity to stay with local people provides an enriching experience, puts dollars into their communities, and facilitates cultural exchange. The list of reasons why some travelers prefer STRs is long. Here is one example. We had a single mother and young daughter who came to get their service dog from Brigadoon. We had a single mother and young daughter who came to get their service dog from Brigadoon. Brigadoon trains service dogs in order to give independence to children, adults, and veterans. They needed a place to stay for two weeks where they could bond with the service dog and take part in a two-week training. They were also in need of a yard to carry out training sessions. An STR was the ideal place for the needs of this family. STRs also build bridges between our community and the world. We hosted Sylvia McAdams, a First Nations activist who spoke about environmental rights. We've hosted students from across the nation who took part in a program at Western studying family planning in Rwanda. They stayed with us for three weeks and then traveled to Rwanda and returned for two more weeks. These students represented a diverse group of Americans, African Indian, Asian, and Here is a quote from a guest that highlights another benefit. This is a guest who said, "I live in Vancouver, BC, and I used to get out of town frequently with trips to Seattle. Although I still love visiting Seattle, over the last couple of years, I have discovered weekends in Bellingham offer much of the same things I love about Seattle, but with the charm and peacefulness of a much smaller place. And when I am back home and daydreaming about my next visit to Bellingham, the thought that pulls at me the most is returning to this lovely cozy and thoroughly relaxing STR." This is just one guest who repeatedly comes to Beham, on a bike, I might add, and spends dollars at local establishments. STRs like ours keep guests coming back to Beham time and time again. Our neighbors support us, too." Ah, darn. Dang. That's okay.
Good evening. So, question: Do we have a housing crisis or not? Do we want to sacrifice more of our housing stock to the short-term rental market? Do you want to give our dwelling units to tourists as short-term rentals, or have them used for our own citizens? Our neighborhoods should not become business venues. Allowing this would belie your claims to want more affordable housing. Thank you.
Next three speakers are Amy Frazier, Diane Foster, and Don Keenan.
Hi. In my experience as a vacation rental host and traveler, a large percentage of visitors to Bellingham are looking for unique, connected, authentic experiences, much like Carrie described. I'm not sure data has been collected on the revenue these travelers bring to our city, but I believe it's quite a lot. Many travelers attracted to this northwest corner want to stay in STRs 365 days out of the year. These visitors want to experience the real Bellingham away from hotel corridors. They want to connect directly with residents, staying in one-of-a-kind, home-like lodging rather than the chain feel of many hotels, but not all hotels. They want to be directed to the best of Bellingham and tend to spend their money at local businesses. They learn about our city from residents with a deep caring for Wackam County, who serve as ambassadors with heart and commitment to the well-being of this place. Travelers and hosts earn and share more than revenue. In an increasingly divided nation, they receive and offer goodwill that can't be measured. I encourage you to consider unintentional consequences of adopting an ordinance that severely limits STRs, such as the 90-day cap. Some of these unintended consequences may include apartments and other landlords in urban villages switching a sizable number of their units to STRs, removing the existing temporary affordable housing options currently provided via STRs for traveling nurses, visiting professors, those waiting to purchase a home, or between-living situations, or picking up a service dog. Many of these STRs, such as room in people's homes, would not become available as long-term rentals if they ceased to operate year-round. Inhibit other unintended consequences. Inhibit a gratifying and positive experience serving as a side-income stream, enabling existing long-term local residents to continue to afford to live within city limits. And it would open some STRs as long-term rentals at market rates, which, as yesterday's Herald's article indicates, is not particularly affordable. I believe many of us respect and acknowledge the need for clarity via an ordinance, but see the issue of STR regulation as distinct from affordable housing provision. However, an example of one innovative way of addressing both issues would be to remove the 90-day rental cap and instead require hosts to use some of their annual revenue to contribute to the home fund. I also encourage you to make an effort to avoid sweeping generalizations or assumptions about STRs or hosts. Lisa, I may have missed it, but I didn't hear that you heard from hosts, a group of hosts as stakeholders, when you listed the stakeholders you'd heard from, and you may, I may have missed it. So I encourage you to make an effort to research and thoroughly understand all aspects of STRs in Bellingham, including their many contributions, before you make your decision. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Foster from Seehom neighborhood. I'm on the board. And much of my points have already been covered by Abe Jacobson and Dick Conneboy. But at any rate, I do have an article, which I will send you electronically, and I'm sorry I didn't participate in that conversation last year. I was out of town for most of the year having a bone marrow transplant, so now I'm back and I'm trying to catch up with everything. But there's an article from CityLab.com that says, "New Data Finds More Airbnb Listings Mean Higher Rent." And I know that's a big deal in this community. And these are professors of economics at both University of Massachusetts and MIT. So I'm saying that I'm against short-term rentals, except that I do think it's a good idea to have them inside the house and owner-occupied. I think extra bedrooms or basements or whatever would be fine, as Mayor Kelly mentioned. So that's good for me, but I don't want DADUs rented out and creating more competition for local people. So there was an interesting article in the Herald today that, I was kind of bemused by this, described a Columbia neighborhood resident who began an Airbnb rental during a financial crisis, which is totally reasonable and understandable, but then you get to the point where he owns five properties apart, and wonder why he couldn't rent or sell them to long-term residents. And then he said, "It's not really affecting housing stock." Well, really, it is affecting housing stock. And, you know, he could have sold or rented them and made money that way, rather than short-term rentals at $100 a night. So, you know, we live in an unjust economy based on wealth accumulation, producing more and more poor and homeless people all the time with record corporate profits. Let's be part of the solution, not part of the problem. And I would respectfully request that council members with any financial interests like DADUs or rental units, please recuse themselves from a vote on this issue.
Hi, council. I'm Don Keenan. I live in Seehom neighborhood. Another big topic with lots of different opinions. I would join the list of some people who have been somewhat perplexed by this ordinance appearing, from the planning commission to you that you're dealing with. Last couple of months, you had this chambers filled with people who were saying, "We have to do something," no matter, you know, what it is, any little thing that will help increase housing. And parts of this ordinance, as you received it, really seemed to work in the opposite direction. So it's a little bit confusing. I think that the best approach would be to take some time to study this issue, because some people who are more ahead of the curve on this in terms of their experience are doing a lot of backpedaling on this kind of thing. For example, just last week, the city of Boston, counseled by an 11 to 2 vote, passed new ordinance that was filed by the mayor initially, that will ban renters and investors from renting apartments by the night, hotel-style, on popular websites like Airbnb. And they say that about at least 2,000 apartments have been taken out of housing for local people because of Airbnb, because it's been taken over by private companies that are buying up places or giving landlords a cut and then renting them out, and also that they're being used as de facto hotels. So that's something that to be cautious about. And Paris is also suing Airbnb and other places just recently, joining a long list of major cities, New York, San Francisco, London, Barcelona, and Berlin, who are fighting short-term rentals because many city officials are believing that short-term rentals are contributing to property speculation, making neighborhoods too expensive for locals to afford. And so, here we are, and you're able to take some time and look at this item in relation to what you've just passed, and in relation to the needs you see in the community, and what's coming up before you the rest of the year. I would just say that if you look at what the findings of fact are from the planning commission, and you look at the first three, the goal, support, sense of place, and then unique character of the neighborhoods, et cetera, they relate to housing. The last two relate to economics, but the ordinance as written just guarantees that if you pass it, you will surely not be protecting neighborhoods as you can. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on this issue? Seeing none, staff, is there anything you'd like to respond to?
Not at this time, thank you.
I'll turn it back over to the council. Councilmember Lilquist.
I'll move to Planning Committee.
Tag it.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to move this issue to a future Planning Committee meeting. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Ferguson.
I just wanted to address one thing about our housing issues, is this is already happening. We're not asking to have it created. This is about us figuring out how we can regulate this and ensure that we do have our housing stock. So we're trying to solve a problem that's in front of us, not create one. We're looking for solutions here.
Councilmember Gorman.
Yeah, I just want to mention, relating to what Pinky's saying as well, the numbers. Right now, they're saying we have 300 and whatever numbers, when this is illegal. Every one of these are illegal right now. So we have 300 and some people who dared to violate the law to establish them. Well, if we make it illegal, then let's look at where that number goes when people know that they can do it legally. You know, so, and that's one of the reasons we brought this forward. We need to have some regulations because it was totally illegal before, and people were doing it anyway. And so, I do have that concern. We'll discuss it in committee, but...
Look forward to discussing these and all opinions about it during the Planning Committee meeting. Is there any further discussion, council? Councilmember Brandon.
I'll support the motion.
So I'm just looking for more data, because I didn't see in the finding impacts that one of the reasons was, will it impact our housing stock? I imagine it would, but I didn't see any data to support that, so...
Yeah, and we can, the planning commission recommended a cap because they were looking at the total number of single-family units in single-family areas.
As you come back.
Sure.
Some data would be great. And then my other one that I'd like to get out now, because I didn't hear it addressed, was as far as there's, sometimes we do something and it's really difficult to be undone, and I imagine if we were to pass something where people could have full homes, they may make an investment, knowing that they could do an Airbnb, and then if after 170, we said, whoa, this, we have data now, it's actually negatively impacting our inventory, they might have a case to say, well, we need to be grandfathered in because we did this under a law for the city. So I would just like that to be addressed, maybe considered. Is there a provision that needs to be said? So if we do define data, say this does get passed, can we go backwards? Or once we've started it, those are going to be there as long as that owner has it.
We'll certainly prepare it. That would be a pre-existing legal nonconforming if you change your law subsequently, and they're allowed to continue.
Councilmember Lilquist.
Yeah, when this does come to committee, I'd like to understand what the mayor means by the Portland model versus the Seattle model, the two approaches you might take to this. And I just want to mention in passing that I think our boarding and rooming house definition is mistaken. I've said it for years. I tried to move to committee. I might try to reopen that one more time.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded to move the, let's see, short-term rental regulations discussion to the Planning Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does the opposed say no? Motion carries unanimously. So we will close this public hearing, but keep the written record open, especially if you have any additional thoughts. Convey them to the council or to staff, and we will be happy to help. That concludes all four public hearings. We will now move on to the 15-minute public comment period, and this is your chance to discuss anything that wasn't discussed previously during the public hearings, about anything going on in the city that's on your mind. And we'll take those names now.
Amy Glasser. I'm noticing on the council that there are some people that are somewhat older, a little bit past middle-aged, and I'd like to know if some of you guys, if you were walking along Holly Street, or Commercial, or Cornwall, and you had a feeling of that you were going to maybe pass out because of whatever illness you might have, because you're hot or whatever it is, and you need to sit down, and how long it might take to get up. The police are giving people tickets. After a few warnings, I will admit, for sitting on the sidewalk still, I watched a couple of, no, one police say to a couple of people sitting outside the record store, "Well, we have to ask you to move along because we make the homeless move along, and we have to be fair." Which, to me, maybe I'm wrong, indicates that the rule is there for the homeless, not for the people who are sitting in front of the record store. Or else you would say it's a law for safety for everybody. But referring it to the homeless means it's for the homeless in particular. $150 fine, I will repeat, is not going to get paid by the homeless. It's going to end up in a warrant. It's going to end up in an arrest for maybe something else, maybe for having an open bottle, maybe for smoking a joint outside, but the bottom line is that initial $150 ticket is going to result in clogging of our criminal justice system for poverty, for not having a place to sit. I heard about and watched a man who was disabled. He couldn't get up, and he kept getting told by the officer, "You need to move on. You need to move on." Compassion, for God's sakes! Get rid of that stupid law ordinance that you can get rid of, that was created during the Linville era. Do it! It can be done really, really quickly. I did a little bit of research. Doesn't matter when it was created, whether it was then, before, after, and you can smile all you want, but you have the ability to get rid of that rule, that ordinance. And I believe it's becoming a civil rights thing. There's no benches. You took them out! You took out more benches out of Sunset Pond. You took benches off of the streets of Bellingham. You're taking them away to make the homeless invisible. That's the only thing we can come up with, that they're becoming invisible, and that's your doing. They're not invisible. They're here. If I'm correct, you just liked that little ordinance about temporary encampments and took out the 501(c)(3)'s. That eliminates all the small, little nonprofits, and now you've got your churches who said they're not doing it. My God, people! Emergency is an emergency. Homes now means now. Showers now, outside for showers now, so people won't smell and be embarrassed if they go on the bus. I am begging you people, please, stop stalling and do something. You have a lot of parks in this city. Do something. Use them, and take care of all of your people, not just your property taxpayers.
Sarah Amber Cardenas. That was our last speaker.
Sorry if we made her wait so long. Anyone else wishing to address the council, please come forward. You can also use the microphone upstairs. You don't have to come all the way down here, just make sure you press the button. You guys can Rochambeau, but I'll go first.
Can you hear me? All right. My name is Jennifer Mansfield, and I'm a 20-year resident of Bellingham, Washington. I want to reiterate and compound what Amy Glasser just stated by saying that we are penalizing people for life-sustaining activities in our town. They're living in substandard quality living circumstances in which our ordinances are basically putting them in a worse situation than they already are. So I am trying to represent those people and try to endorse navigation centers for these life-sustaining activities that we may move forward as a city and try to... these life-sustaining activities, that we may move forward as a city and try to challenge our status quo of how we treat the people who are in this situation and in this predicament. So, I'm not a public speaker, and, but I do feel that this is, this needs to be stated in such a way that we are all encompassing the most important factors here, which is that there are people in our town, in our township, who do not have what we have right now, which is basic roof over our heads, showers on a daily basis, hygiene, waste management. These are characteristics of what we consider to be a normal day-to-day routine lifestyle that we all deserve to live by. So, I support agencies like Homes Now, Not Later. They're working really hard to address this issue. So, that's all I have to say.
Hi, Jim Peterson, President of Homes Now. You know, we've been at this for a year. We've raised $30,000. We've housed 30 people, 30 people, on $30,000. You know, there's no camping in the city of Bellingham. Well, people are going to camp. We've been trying for a year to set up something. You know, I don't know what, what the council or the mayor's problem is with Homes Now or me. If it's personal, get over the personalities. It's not about personalities, it's about helping the homeless. One month, four days, well, five days now ago, an idea was formed at Homes Now that we needed to win. So, we bought a truck, we turned it into a shower truck, and now for 6,250, $6,250, we've showered 47 people. One person got a job because she got a shower. She was on her way, she had a job interview, but was dirty, and she came by when we were over here testing it. And so, she took a shower, got in clean clothes, went to the job interview, and came back happy as heck, she got the job. We know there's people in this town that can't be helped by Homes Now. We're not saying Homes Now can solve the problem, but we're not asking you for money. We're just asking you, give us permission, get out of our way, and let us go. What have you got to lose? We housed 30 people already. What, you're afraid we'll house more, or what? I don't get it. We have dumpsters and porta-pots out now. Now, we have a problem with the Fairhaven dumpster. Huh. The homeless are complaining to us that the house people are filling it up with their trash. What do we do about that? Take the dumpster out and punish the homeless? We got people down at Sunset Pond telling us that police officers are telling them that dumpster and that porta-pop that was put there for them is not for their use. I just, I just don't get it. I don't see what your problem is with us, is maybe the messenger or whatever, but we proved over and over, what we say we can do, we do. We're a responsible nonprofit. Nobody gets paid, we don't have a big million-dollar budget, but we get stuff done now, not later. The homeless don't have time to wait for the five-year plan. They don't have time to wait for a 10-year plan, because by then, there'll be twice as many homeless. So, I'm just urging you, let us get going. Let us do something. Let us set up Tent City. Give us a piece of property, a corner, a parking lot. I drive around this town every day, and I see places that would work perfect, but yet we still get the same answer, "No. You're not a responsible enough nonprofit." Or we get told when we're sitting in meetings, "We're looking for a nonprofit to work with us." Well, we're right here, we're right now, and we want to work. Thank you.
Okay, one last speaker, please.
I'm Marcus D. I'm also advocating for Homes Now. I'm sure you just heard about Homes Now quite well. I was one of the people who envisioned and helped to complete the shower truck that we're also very proud of, and that is the word that I'd like to bring up, completion. And as Jim just pointed out, maybe we're having a messenger issue, that, that's clear to me. I mean, I've seen it within this council, within the county council as well, people who have tended to feel like this group is too volatile, too volatile or unable to bring to completion safely or in a fashion that we can all feel proud of. This is a community answer. I heard, I've heard nothing tonight, except a problem with housing. And here we are, a publicly funded group with a solution, and if the messenger is the problem, I just, I want to remind you that this is a community solution. I'm not calling Jim out to say, "He was homeless for 17 years." One night in Bellingham can make you very post-traumatically stressed for the rest of your life, if it's the wrong night. Let's not have those nights here. These guys are so on top of it, I'm sold. I'm giving everything I can, where I can, with these guys, and I want you guys to do it too. I challenged the county council the last time that I was in there to just, please, every one of you, focus one month. When I was last in here, I said winter was around the corner. It's around the corner. We have to do this. We have to do something right, and this group can. We're paying for it ourselves. We need you to let us, to help us, to give us your trust, your faith, and to recognize, please, that this group gets a vision and brings it to completion in a timely fashion with only 4% administrative fees on everything we do. The passion you see, that's community. Did you want a community answer? It's here. Thanks.
Okay, I will close the 15-minute public comment. I thank every community member that showed up tonight to provide their testimony on all these various issues. Your council was happy to hear from you.
First of all, as you all know, and first of all, thank you all for taking the issue of the hardest-to-place homeless individuals we have in our community so seriously. This city, besides having the housing levy, is committed, I think 100%, to having affordable housing for, me, what I would say is anybody who lives here, of course, we can't provide all the housing, but we're very interested, I am very interested in doing that. And we have so many success stories for homeless people in our community, unsheltered people in our community, and it always gets overshadowed by the need that we're not being able to meet. And I empathize with everybody, whatever they've said about, you know, the problems at the drop-in center, we never intended it for it to be that way. And I think that I personally, in our conversations, have made a commitment personally on my behalf, not on your behalf, that I do not think that our Old Town Urban Village is an appropriate place for a 200-bed low-barrier shelter, because then we will not be implementing our Old Town Plan, which those that came before me put a lot of time and effort in. I continue to work with the port. I tend to be a glasses-half-full person. I sent them the criteria that we used when we went out to look for other sites besides the property that we used to own, and there's two port commissioners that are interested in working with us. So, I appreciate that, because there's just too many barriers to do that big a shelter outside of light industrial property. I just believe it is. Having said that, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to regularly update you on what you're doing. I just signed a list of home fund, CDAB contracts that Roxanne and I signed that are going to go out into our community, and the plans for the other housing that's being developed, I think is very important, but also the other housing that's being developed. Rick, I don't think has given this statistic to us yet, but I think we, he's here, why don't you come up in case I tell a fib? There, we were looking at our growth projections, and our growth projections were 1,300, and our projections, the projection that we had was 1,500 for this 17.
Yes, the preliminary OFM numbers have come in. We've now got two years since our complaint was adopted. We're tracking on our growth projections, and the good news is we're actually building more units than are met by in-migration and growth. So, essentially, we're getting ahead, and our vacancy rate is increasing. Our vacancy rate is now above the state average. It's still low at 2.1.
It's not very high.
But we've gone significantly upward, which means that the things that are in the pipeline, the construction, isn't just meeting the folks moving here, and the folks who are born here, subtracting folks who leave us, but we're actually getting a bit ahead, and that's great. What that typically means is we'll see a stabilization in rents, which is really a good thing, and a slowing of housing appreciation. The important thing to remember is that in the next 18 years, three Tacomas are coming to Washington State, three cities the same size as Tacoma, if you spread it out. So, it will be desirable. Will we ever get to 6%? No, but we're making headroads to get towards 3 and 4%, which will help significantly.
And what that does is allows us to spend more time concentrating on our unsheltered populations, and with the housing levy coming forward, with our work on Grace and on, with our partnership with the county, with the other not-for-profits that have projects in the works. I think that the city, the authorization that you've given for what we can spend the housing fund on and others, has been very positive. Having said that, we still have a steep hill to climb, and I think the comments that you heard today only reinforce that. And so, two of the things when we met with some of the neighbors was, the first thing is, I made a commitment, like I said, it's not a, not a commitment for you, it's just a commitment for me, to advocate that there wouldn't be that low-barrier shelter in the Old Town Urban Growth Village, Urban Village. And the second thing is, security is a problem. We never knew what was going to be going on with the number of people that went there, and we had tried to hire or to donate money to the Lighthouse Mission to hire security, and of course, they like to keep the money separate, and we do too, when it comes to religious organizations. But Chris, Chriselli, Officer Chriselli was there when we had our meeting, and we did talk about what can we do to increase our preventative policing in that area. If we didn't have the concentration of people that we do there, that 900 calls that are upsetting to everyone, those calls wouldn't be at one location, they'd be spread all over the city. So, it isn't that the calls would go away if we didn't have the drop-in center, they just wouldn't be all in, in one place. So, we're going to look into the security issue and see if there's anything that we can do as a city to help that preventative, those, to try to prevent the activities that go on where it isn't acceptable. So, anyway, so that was the shelter stuff. Okay, I think I didn't blow it. The showers came up, and we are looking at potentially, and it's not, it's not a done deal yet, but looking at potentially unused showers that the city has control over, and how we would operate those, so that there would be shower facilities that people could use on city property. So, we'll be bringing that proposal back to you. And also, the Lighthouse Mission also now has a shower van. So, I think people realize that if you want to, people need to be clean, they want to be clean. Now, we're trying to give them more options to do that. And I know that there's been complaints and concerns about the Happy Valley dumpster, and certainly, our intent was that it would be for the homeless, unsheltered people to use, but, and I'll follow up with Ted on that, but otherwise, I'm pleased that we could get those out there when we did, and they're, I know people are using them, the right people, the people we intended them for, and so I don't know how to keep people we didn't intend them for to use them, but it's, taking it away is not an option for me. I don't think that's how we regulate it. And then fireworks.